One, two, just to give a high level brief overview. We do have a draft kind of report that has a lot more supplementary information, more detail in it, particularly on those kind of the first year activities. But agenda today, going to touch on again that early study history, how we developed the first roughly dozen preferred or dozen alternates. And then more recently over this last year, really heavy emphasis on public involvement, getting the word out to the public, getting input on some of the top alternates. And then kind of next steps of where the project's headed and hurdles we need to clear as cost, funding. So again, going back to those early twenty-one summer, a lot of data collection where we looked at past studies, looked at and mapped historic properties throughout the downtown area. Also identified sites that had potential for hazardous materials. We did a street sidewalk inventory analysis, parking, really a lot of the background data that would drive a lot of analytics to develop some of the alternatives. And so in the fall of twenty-two, we presented a lot of that information and then the scoring matrix for alternatives. At that point, we narrowed it down to three kind of viable options. And again, this last year, very heavy focus on public involvement, stakeholder engagement. So year ago, this is kind of where we're at. I think there's actually fourteen different alternates here, some variations of variations. And across the top, you can kind of see some of the scoring metrics we use to evaluate and compare across a whole handful of alternates. That time, we kind of narrowed the focus down to kind of three options there in white. Two at twenty-third Avenue, and that's paired with a pedestrian bridge at twenty-fifth and then kind of an S-curved option from twenty-third through twenty-sixth Avenue. And so those are the ones that were kind of deemed based on these metrics as the most viable. And those are the ones that were carried forward over this last year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michael and he'll kind of touch on those three main options.
Okay, so for this first option, this was just straight down twenty-third Avenue. Really looked at just what it would take to just simply get up and over the railroad tracks using that existing alignment. Couple of things we looked at here was, you know, putting the structure in, you know, what impact would that have to adjacent properties? So we looked at just who had access right off twenty-third Avenue and, you know, looked at driveways, alleyways, you know, doorways. And and those are represented by the symbols here, the squares, the triangles and circle. Along with this, you know, it is kind of tight through there. It's probably around five to ten feet off some of those building faces, so it is kind of tight in through there. But, you know, each of these properties will kind of have some varying impacts to their accesses. You know, most will still have that kind of pedestrian accessibility right in front of the of the building there. From a vehicular standpoint, you know, we did have to close Tenth Street and Thirteenth Street to east-west through traffic just due to the grade raise through there as well as, you know, just the height clearance to even go underneath the viaduct itself. So did have to close through access to those streets. That was kind of a big drawback of this option. We had to turn Twelfth Street into a cul-de-sac because it did dead end at twenty-third Avenue, so we kind of lost that access there. But, you know, Eleventh Street was still still open underneath the viaduct there for that south side of the tracks. So this was a good option, like I said, just to kind of get up and over the railroad, try to limit the impacts to the buildings as far as property acquisitions and building takes. Like Matt had mentioned, you know, from a pedestrian use, you know, twenty-third Avenue is a little bit farther to the east from kind of the core downtown areas. So a pedestrian would have to walk quite a ways to get to this viaduct. And, you know, they really have to get on at Fourteenth Street and to get up and over. So with with this option, it would be paired with a pedestrian viaduct. It's kind of what that would kind of look like here. So we'd have it at twenty-fifth Avenue. That was in a past agreement that that's where that location would be. You know, we could look to Twenty-sixth Avenue, but at the moment, twenty-fifth Avenue is where that would be just kind of given the the location of where buildings and pedestrians were walking in in the downtown on the north side from the past data that we collected. And then kind of location based on the on the south side of the railroad tracks there too. So what would that look like? I mean, you guys got that one at Eighteenth Avenue, pedestrian structure, you know, there's only so many ways you can do those. Traditional designs, the switchback designs that you typically see just for ADA requirements. The the picture on top there is is in Denver, Colorado. It was a structure we worked on out in Denver. That one, like like the Eighteenth Avenue, had that's traditional switchback design. And they also paired it with the staircase just for some more quick access for those abled pedestrians. On this project, we have had discussions about, you know, an elevator, using an elevator instead of using switchbacks. So the bottom picture there is is an example of that, what Creighton did on their campus to cross six-eighty in Omaha. So you can kind of see that elevator shaft there and then they they paired it with some some stairs on the side there. So like I said, not too many different ways you can do a pedestrian structure, but those are kind of two examples there. But a pedestrian structure, just like I said, for for pedestrians and on twenty-third Avenue, the the distance there. Each of the options that we have for twenty-third Avenue would be paired with this type of structure, so. The second option, this is at twenty-third Avenue again. So what we tried to do with this option was, you know, I talked about those those street closures at Tenth and Thirteenth. So we really wanted to look at, you know, what it would take to keep all the road network open. So to do that, we first tried to see what it would take to get Thirteenth Street open. So we kind of had to shift our starting point to the north a little bit to gain our elevation and get over Thirteenth Street. We still needed a little bit more distance, so we also kind of shifted to the east a little bit. That helped us not only to get that elevation, but also was allowed us to keep that lower network roadway connected with Twelfth Street there and into some of the alleyways. And then you kind of get over to the south side of the tracks, kept Eleventh Street open like the the previous option. And then you'll see Tenth Street and Fourteenth Street on either side of the tracks. We we had to do a little bit more roadway work just to the, due to the nature of the grade raise at those intersections. But like I said, this this option was just to see what would happen to keep all the roadway networks open. I think it does a great job of that. But obviously, the big drawback to this one is the the you would have to acquire some of those properties on to east of of twenty-third Avenue and and you would have to demolish some of the buildings along those properties. But another benefit to that too is, you know, that there are some historical buildings on the the western side of twenty-third Avenue. And I know everybody knows about glurs on the south side. And then you also got the kind of more historical buildings along Thirteenth Street there. So it provided an additional benefit there to get away from some of those historical buildings. Another benefit to this would be, you know, I mentioned twenty-third Avenue, straight down the middle, about five to ten feet off buildings. That does make it a little bit difficult from a constructability standpoint. You know, the contractor's got to move a little slower and and just got to be more detailed. So that kind of can increase costs in in some instances. So this would help that, you know, it's a little more open, you know, after you get the buildings down, the contract has a little more flexibility there for a constructability standpoint. And then, like I mentioned in the top right there, that pedestrian structure would be paired with this one as well. So just want to double back on that one. Our last option is a little bit different. So this one is it's kind of a diagonal approach across the railroad tracks. We really wanted to maximize that connectivity with both vehicles and pedestrians on this option. So what we did was we started on the north side at Thirteenth Street at the at grade of that intersection and curved around and utilized what is now Twelfth Street over here. And that allowed us to gain that elevation parallel to the tracks without disturbing any of the properties adjacent. And then we were able to diagonal across and then curve down and tie down on on Twenty-sixth Avenue on the south side. So like I had mentioned, you know, we wanted to connect both both users of this with pedestrians and and vehicles. And twenty-third Avenue to the north was pretty heavily traveled from our data. Twenty-sixth Avenue was a decently traveled section as well, so we got that that good connectivity there. Twenty-sixth Avenue also heads down to to the park along the river. So this structure would connect really well into the trail systems that that Columbus has. And then also pedestrian use as well. You know, I mentioned more of the pedestrians are are a little bit further to the west. So what we did was we we utilized the structure that we already were constructing there for vehicles. And you can see the little square, red square with the the half moon blue shape there on at the corner here of Twel- twelfth and twenty-fifth Avenue and then Twenty-sixth and Eleventh Street. That would that would be an elevator shaft. We showed elevators on this option just to kind of give a visual of of what that would look like. But you utilize the the bridge that was already there and you got pedestrians on the bridge just on either side of the railroad tracks. So again, great connectivity there for for pedestrians. Only one building take on this, you can see with the red shape there. But that's one of the drawbacks, but the the big question mark on this one is Twelfth Street is technically currently on Union Pacific Railroad right of way. This this option would utilize Union Pacific's right of way quite a bit. So further discussions would have to be have with them on that option, but or on this option. But all in all, this is this was a great option. Matt showed that scoring matrix before, so this one was was the higher scoring one on that that matrix in in particular. So I guess, sorry, I had one slide here showing that railroad right of way, that that red shape that you see there would be Union Pacific's right of way, so just kind of give you a visual of what that would look like. So in the essence of time, we do have 3D renderings for for all of these options. We showed them at the the public meetings that Matt mentioned earlier. I guess for the instance of time, I'm just going to show some of the 3D renderings of of this option because like I mentioned, this was the higher scoring option at the moment. So just kind of show you some 3D renderings just to to get everyone's a picture of what this one would look like. So here's here's kind of a bird's eye perspective from looking on the south side of the tracks, looking north. You can kind of see Frankford Square right here. And then now I'll kind of just pop into street view at at some of the major streets. We'll start at the the circle circle down here in the bottom left and just kind of work our way around the outside to kind of give you some orientation there. So this is Tenth Street looking east. Again, we had to close close that street on on this option. I guess I didn't mention that earlier, but we we do have to close Tenth Street on this option. Just you can see in the grade raise there and have to turn it into a cul-de-sac. This is Eleventh Street looking east. We were able to keep that that movement through underneath the viaduct itself. You can see here, we were shown that pedestrian elevator structure there off to the right. I'll bring attention to the the green space there. Those are shown a lot of these views as a potential area for some repurposed use. We like to call them activation spaces. I'll get into some detail here in a little bit about those, but you'll see those kind of throughout some of these little views here. This next slide just kind of shows that that demolition of that building on the south side of the tracks there. This is Twelfth Street looking east, looking at a cul-de-sac there too with the with the elevator tower. You can see it's some good use for for pedestrian activation spaces there. This is Twenty-fifth Avenue looking south at the tracks. This is Twenty-fourth Avenue looking south at the tracks. And then this is Thirteenth Street looking west. So you can see we, you know, very minimal impact to that that north area and the and the existing network to the to the north downtown area on that one. This is Twenty-fifth Avenue looking north and then kind of showing the the demo of the building there really kind of opens it up. And then this is Eleventh Street looking west. And then this one kind of shows the the demo of that building there. And then this is Tenth Street looking west. So again, kind of had to close the road there and and create a cul-de-sac at the end due to the grade raise. Little bird's eye perspective, just kind of showing those those main buildings there on the on the north side of the tracks. Really just street realignment is really what this one was. No, no major impacts to those buildings on the north side. This is on the south side, just above Eleventh Street, looking south along Twenty-sixth Avenue. This is kind of depicts, you know, how close that that curvature, that roadway is to the the inner building right there. Can kind of show you that pedestrian structure there as well. This next slide just kind of shows how much it opens up when that building's demolished. And then this one kind of shows just the proximity to that that machine shop on the south, on the west side of Twenty-sixth Avenue. Kind of similar to that first option, that twenty-third Avenue, right down the middle, just about five to ten feet off. But this would be the kind of only location on this option. And then this is just kind of at street, street level at Eleventh Street, just to kind of give another perspective of how close it gets to rounding the building there. Also shows kind of how open it is underneath the bridge there. You know, I mentioned those those activation spaces. And and really, when you're looking at a viaduct like this, you know, traditionally, sometimes those areas are unused and just kind of forgotten in some cases. But with this being in the downtown area, the city kind of wanted to repurpose that. You know, you got a lot of pedestrian traffic, you know, there's a lot of potential for for some extra use underneath the viaduct there. So that's kind of what I'll talk about next here is, so these are our three options that I presented. The the orange circles are are those areas of potential activation. And you can see there's there's several locations on on each of the alternatives. So you, one of the great benefits is no matter what option is chosen moving forward, you know, you do have a lot of of potential areas for that that extra act of activation. And we had confluence on our team to to kind of look at these areas and, you know, reimagine what what could be possible there. They came up with a lot of options. You can do a lot from just general lighting, colorful lighting, painting. You can do some more physical type structures like a play structure for kids or, you know, maybe more like a dog park or water feature. So a lot of potential there. And and we brought this up at some of our public meetings and and kind of got a feel for what the public would use. And I'll I'll talk about that that here in a second as well. But like I said, a lot, a lot of good use for there. I will say the buzzword at a lot of meetings is is parking. So that is another option as well, just being close to downtown, you you can utilize that space underneath for for some parking. As Matt mentioned, this year was really heavily focused on on public involvement, you know, presenting all the information that I just presented to you here briefly to the public. We gave a pretty good detailed presentation to to some stakeholders on on August second and third. That would be just any downtown business or resident that would be heavily impacted by the project. Were invited to attend the meeting, gave them a a presentation, gave them some renderings. And then after the meeting, we had kind of a little voting activity to kind of get their feel on, you know, what what option they, you know, preferred the most. And then also kind of got a vote on on some of those activation spaces as well. Very well attended meetings, I think. Out of the three meetings, we had probably close to a hundred and twenty plus people show up, so very well attended. We were pretty excited about that early on, starting the public involvement process. And then a week later, we went to to Columbus Days. The top right picture there is is our booth at Columbus Days. Kind of had some similar information there. We had our schematic layouts of all the options. We had some some 3D renderings paired with those as well. And we got a lot of people come up and ask us questions. We had three of us there from Wilson and that seemed like it wasn't enough at some point. So we we had a lot of people come up, ask questions, really good questions. And to to kind of get their vote in that fashion was, we we handed out a little flyer that had a QR code for an online survey that they could take with them and do the survey. So we got some results from that that I'm going to show here in a little bit. And then on August twenty-ninth, we had a public open house. So just anybody from the public could could attend that one. And it was set up very similar to those stakeholder meetings where we gave a presentation and then they were allowed to ask questions and then kind of have that same voting activity at the end. So the city did a great job of helping us out with with some of the exposure. They posted it on their on your website, did it on the social media. And that got some pretty good traction with with the with the general public. But it also prompted the the local news sources to pick it up. So it got picked up by the Columbus Telegram as well as News Channel Nebraska. And they they came to the public open house meeting, you know, wrote an article about it. And we we saw a pretty big uptick in participation on the survey there. So we really casted a really wide net on on getting out to the public, you know, with having physical meetings as well as online and social media. So we were we were really pleased with some of the feedback that that we got with with the meetings and then just participation as well in the survey. So looking at the survey itself, so this is actually all responses. So this is this is all voting from the stakeholder meetings, online survey, open house, public meeting. You can kind of see the the twenty-sixth to twenty-third Ave curved option, that last option that I presented is is almost about fifty percent of the vote, kind of leading the way there. And then the two options at at twenty-third Avenue are more or less split, which we were kind of surprised to see, you know, that first stakeholder meeting that we had, you know, it was kind of more favored towards the the E-shift option. So that got us thinking of, you know, what what would be the the preferred option at twenty-third Avenue? So we looked at both in-person voting and online voting. And and we really did kind of see that difference. So this this shows kind of that in-person voting, the dot exercise that we had for those that attended. And we really think that the people that came in person got more information, more detailed information, kind of saw a lot of those 3D renderings. And I think that kind of convinced them on some of their voting. So just one thing we noticed, you know, you can, you can, we can go out and do it another vote too. But it did seem kind of a a pretty big gap between those that were in person versus that who just voted online in particular, so.
Question for you in regard to that breakdown. When we ask people their choices, were you really asked? I'm wondering if we're really not asking for three separate locations and people are trying to choose between three locations and we're really only asking for two locations, three options. My point being, are we skewing the results by having three locations or three options as part of our survey when we're really, first of all, trying to find out what is your thoughts on the best location? To me, to me, twenty, it should be asked twenty-sixth or twenty-third. If twenty-third happened to win, then it's what option? But to have two twenty-thirds, again, and I'm not advocating one way or the other. I've just, I've actually been asked this question by some citizens. You know, in reality, twenty-third wins the percentage if you put them together, you know?
True.
And so I I just think we want to be careful how we're judging what this is showing us right now. I mean, if you wanted us, and you're not, but if you wanted us to leave this meeting and say, okay, which one do you want? You know, to say forty, to say forty-eight, you know, Twenty-sixth Avenue wins, I don't know if that's really true for location.
For location, yeah.
You know, I'm not talking about design, I'm talking about location.
Sure. Yeah, early, early on, we went to twenty, twenty-twenty-one Columbus Days where we actually specifically asked that question to the to the public, you know, which option or which street would you prefer crossing to be at? And funny enough, those votes were pretty split too, it was about right down the middle. So so we still came up with plenty of options at Twenty-sixth Avenue. You know, Matt showed that scoring matrix. A lot of those options just got eliminated basically due to feasibility and constructability and cost and just impacts to to downtown and Frankford Square and all that stuff. So we did have options at Twenty-sixth Avenue. They just didn't seem feasible for what the 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 community would need as far as the use goes. And just, again, impacts to downtown was was pretty extreme on any option at twenty-six. So, yeah, I I see what you're seeing there is, you know, yeah, we got two options at twenty-third. That's that's one location and and Twenty-sixth to Twenty-third is another location. So I guess Matt will talk more about next steps and and what that looks like moving forward. But, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we're going to have to get paired down to to one location anyway, so. But that's a good thought and a way of looking at it, so.
Question. Can I interject another question?
Yeah.
Did you look at a hybrid east shift and east shift on the north side and no shift on the south side as far as twenty-third Avenue was concerned?
And just kind of pass it around.
Yeah, there'd be a, I don't remember, what's what's the shift, ten feet, twenty feet?
It's probably around, yeah, fifteen, twenty feet to the to the east, yeah.
An area, a twenty-foot shift to the east on the north side and a zero-foot shift on the south side. Just looking at it, it looks like that gets the best of both options. And that's something that you can mull about later. That's another, but it's the same location.
You do have some historic properties there on on the south too. And and part of it is then you're not parallel, you'd be kind of more at a tangent, right? And so then to loop back around takes a bigger kind of double loop to tie back in. But I don't think we looked at particularly that exact combination. But again, we looked at probably a couple dozen. We got an error down to twelve, fourteen, now we're down to three. But like you say, there's there's infinite number of possibilities. You know, at the public meetings, we've we've had all kinds of, did you look at this, did you look at that? And some of it, and again, it's just some of those very early parameters of, you know, glurs and some of the historic properties and then just minimizing the takes and footprint overall. So some of these where you're parallel, it's easier to get off and back on versus kind of a tangent. So I don't know if that helps explain a little bit more about this.
It looked like that might eliminate a bunch of problems on the south side and a bunch of problems on the north side as things go further along. And I tend to agree with the leaders, especially about two locations. Three alternatives, we've really only got two locations.
Yeah, you could be splitting the vote there at twenty-third. If you got down to it, whether they would consolidate behind one, one option.
The curved versus the E-shift? You know, I had to do a double take, surprisingly, they're actually about the same. Just. Yeah, just given that we were able to kind of parallel the tracks there a little bit, I think saved a lot on structure length, so. The the difference being too is there was a little bit more roadway, just general roadway construction on the east. The, the difference being too is there was a little bit more roadway, just general roadway construction on the east shift too. So that kind of made, that kind of equalized out there, so.
The, the bridge length's about the same.
The bridge length's, yeah, about the same.
Is a few hundred feet longer on that diagonal.
And one other question in general. The, the elevator option, when you get to the pedestrian portion of either option, whatever we're looking at. Whenever we've talked about elevators, there's usually two things that come up right away. One is maintenance, which I don't think you can address totally other than maintenance is maintenance. The other one is, is public safety. And so when I saw your picture of Creighton University having a pedestrian with an elevator, I guess my question is, what do they think about it? What's the history? Can you, you know, I mean, and maybe you don't have to answer that today because we're not digging into the weeds. But it would certainly be something that I think would give us some, some comfort knowing, you know, how's that working in that neighborhood?
Yeah, and we, and we can visit that site and see if they, they've got, you know, just in general, security officers patrolling that a little bit more. We can see what their camera, if they got cameras up, you know? Cameras are only as good as people looking at them too.
Sure.
You know, you look at lighting, make it sure it's a well-lit. Maybe make sure that the structure itself's in a more open area, not, not so hidden would be kind of the quick things I would think of.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly new addition for them. And I know it opened to quite a bit of fanfare in Omaha, just, you know, it was a major undertaking crossing the interstate and connecting facilities on both sides of that corridor there. But yeah, they, they have lighting and I, I would assume some type of security cameras too, but we could follow up on that, but, yep.
Question?
We have the counts, I guess I don't know them off the, the top of my head. They are in the data that we have in the past, I don't do.
I think it was fifty-five, and again, this was twenty-twenty-one, so a little bit of COVID era, I don't, timeline. But twenty-four hour counts, I believe it was fifty-five users in a twenty-four hour timeline.
Question, if you start on, if you end up going on twenty-third, I don't care whether you're going to curve it or you're going to go straight or you're going to shift it to the east, where do you start up? Can we still, how far down on twenty-third can we still go?
So if you want to back up, you can kind of see it.
About thirteenth, well, it's about numbers eighteen is a pretty fair picture of what I'm talking about.
So right now, we're about a half block north of Ninth Street on the south side. And then on the north end, we're, you know, just shy of fifteenth street is, is kind of our tie-down points at the moment.
Okay.
You're, you're wondering if we can tie, keep going, more north, more south, or?
Well, no, that's, that's fine, but how are you, at Great Plains Building Supply, how are they going to get their supplies?
Yeah, so we kind of looked at, at that option too. So this gray area shows that, that viaduct and you can kind of see in the, this kind of elevation profile view to, to the top of the page there. We, we have other renderings that show possibly giving them an access off twelfth street here and being able to kind of loop through their parking lot with that route. So their, their function would more or less be the same. They would just be driving under a bridge instead of crossing the road there.
And they'd have access as well off of thirteenth. I know we had a representative come to one of the, the public meetings, I believe, spoke with. And we talked through that a little bit as far as truck deliveries, how we could accommodate that.
And be the same on the straight option too, straight off twelfth street.
Did you make any estimates on the traffic count on the pedestrian bridge?
The one you have at eighteenth or just?
Well.
The new one?
I'm specifically talking about the twenty-fifth Avenue one. But if you have something from eighteenth Avenue, I would appreciate that too.
Yeah, again, I don't know what the projections were for eighteenth. Again, when we did traffic counts in twenty-twenty-one, there was fifty-five users in a twenty-four hour window on eighteenth. That was, as far as downtown, we have pedestrian counts, bike counts. That's in your draft report at those key intersections. And it kind of shows the kind of north-south movement of pedestrians. And so you can kind of infer how many are crossing the tracks from that data. I don't have that right in front of me, but I could track that down for you. But in the study, there's a pedestrian counts and bike counts.
Is it a significant, is it a significant number? What's significant?
What's significant, yeah. I would say you're, you would probably have more users at twenty-fifth than you would at eighteenth, just based on the, the raw background. Now, you know, we are still allowing access at twenty-third as well. So you're still having those, you're really getting two pedestrian access points. So at some point, they're going to go to twenty-third versus going to twenty-fifth. So you, you're really going to want to, if this gets built, kind of track both those cumulative counts, but.
Well, and I wonder, councilman, are you leaning toward, is there a ness- a need for a pedestrian? Which I kind of maybe reading, reading into what you're saying. But I think we would need to hear the, the argument of the federal government and giving us money if we didn't have a pedestrian crossing, I think.
That's, that basically is my question, yes. I, I look at the eighteenth Avenue viaduct, we had to build it, so, so be it. But the traffic count on that particular viaduct, I would suggest is very low. Do we really need to build the twenty-fifth Avenue pedestrian overpass or flat connection? The cost per crossing is going to be extremely high.
I mean, I, I, I guess those would be questions we would have to investigate from the funding standpoint of where we are with particular requirements from.
Right.
The government.
Looking back at the two thousand and seven agreement, those were paired, kind of a paired option at that time. When you did have kind of tentative funding agreement in place, again, two thousand and seven. So you, I'm sure you've got fresh people looking at it, different opinions, things have changed since two thousand and seven. But, you know, you always have to ask yourself that question. We had, I had a couple of people at the Columbus Days, you know, it was just like, go ahead and close it. We don't need a viaduct that we're used to driving when the train's there. And, you know, they were questioning the cost of the whole thing, you know? So you do have some people of that opinion too. And that's, no building is always something you should consider as well.
Gentlemen, we're running short on time, we've got about three minutes left. Do you have anything else left to present before we continue with any other questions we may have?
So you might just hit on the amenities.
Yeah, really fast, this is how voting checked out on those, those underpass activation spaces. Like I mentioned, parking was a buzzword, so not surprised that that one was winning. Flexible event space, you know, we, we can get you details of that later, but I kind of see those as kind of the same thing of, you know, you can use parking eighty percent of the time, close down for parking and set up an event. Water feature, cross-street integration playground, dog park, it kind of tapers off from there. But again, there's more details in, in the, the draft report, so.
Yeah, so kind of next steps, where do we move forward? And really, these first two bullets kind of maybe go hand in hand depending on options. If, if the diagonal option from twenty-third to twenty-sixth is carried forward, that has the biggest risk with having to have U P vacate that right of way along. That's twelfth and then those red buildings that were takes were actually on, or apparently on railroad right of way too, they're leased buildings. So that would require quite a bit of concessions from the railroad to make this a viable option. They kind of have the, the major veto vote. If they don't go along, if they see there's a simpler, more direct solution, that's where they're going to be at with less impacts. Now, if you were to take forward one of the two twenty-third street options, I think both those are more traditional in sense and have very similar impacts and expected impacts at the railroad crossing. And so I think there, you're just kind of, you still have coordination with the railroad, but it's more along the customary, traditional timeline. The diagonal would require a, a lot more effort, coordination with the railroad. Ideally, we're getting down to two, if not one, option in the near future, meeting with funding partners. This still has to go to a citywide vote once you get to a preferred alternate. Then also you're looking at traditional, you know, design, right of way relocation, all, all that timeline. So caveat, this is a, a study level rough estimate. We have no survey, no preliminary design. The construction is really kind of the base alternate roadway, bridge network. The bed structure, the first two options there were for a standalone structure. Bed structure on the last twenty-sixth to twenty-third is basically building towers and network, but then you're utilizing the bridge that's there. So that's why that's a slightly lower estimate. You can see the right-of-way impacts on the shifted is the highest. Obviously, there is some right-of-way there with the railroad or that would probably be more temporary or permanent easements. But these are also in twenty-three dollars, you know, timeline. You're looking at probably five years out at minimum, I would guess. And so, yeah, you're looking at low twenties to low thirties at the current estimates. Inflation's been crazy the last few years, so who knows? But if you just apply like three percent inflation like we used to do for a few, for five years, you're tacking on another five million. Just at three percent inflation. Historically, city share is usually around ten percent, railroad's ten and the fed state portion is, is usually the other eighty. And again, just pointing out if there is a simple, simplest and least cost option, that's usually what people are zeroing in on. Any aesthetics or amenities, again, the, the activation areas typically are non-participating. And so that'd be a hundred percent city cost as well. We did reach out to N D O T earlier this year, started the conversations with them. They said falling off their five-year window of, of viaducts. I know Jody Gibson is, is looking to have a conversation with the city staff to kind of get that reprogrammed. And, and some of this kind of helps that conversation as we narrow down hopefully to an option or two. And I know we're kind of at a time when we've answered some questions, but if there's others, be glad to take them. If there's some, we could follow up at another time as well, so.
Not seeing any more questions, I think we'll adjourn. I appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.